All right, let's begin. Seeing the presence of a quorum, I'm calling the meeting of the Emory School Committee to order at 6:30 PM on June 18th, 2024. I am Chair Sarah Marshall, and I'd like everyone else to introduce themselves for the viewing public.
Hi, Jennifer Cho.
Bridgette Hines.
Irv Rhodes.
I'm Deb Leonard.
And our interim superintendent?
Excellent.
Doug Slaughter. Okay, thank you. Our first order of business is to vote to move into executive session so we can discuss. In accordance with open meeting law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A pursuant to purpose two, to conduct collective bargaining sessions with the UFCW with the intent to return to open session. So we can discuss that contract. Can someone move that?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Deb, thanks. All right, so we will move to executive session.
Should be vote.
After your roll call vote.
Oh, yes, yes, that is not enough. All in favor, raise your hand, please.
Actually, after your roll call vote.
Oh, really? For executive session? Even in person, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Even in person, yeah.
Okay, Jennifer.
Aye.
Bridgette.
Aye.
Irv.
Aye.
Deb.
Aye.
And I am an aye. All right, five to zero. Deb, is there a room open or do you need to come?
There is.
The usual?
Uh, yeah, if it's not open, I can open it, so.
Well, they'll be on camera.
Swiper, no swiping. You're right.
So I pose that question to you.
Um.
Whether it's truly public or not public, he would suggest that it's not in some good presses for it.
Okay.
Once.
Goodness.
The thing is, is because all three have to do it.
Right.
I'd hold off.
Right, that's what I want to.
Yeah. I mean, next Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
And before you lift that out, I have to say.
Oh, sure. We lost one. We lost two. So Jennifer, who's in that half me?
The same. Oh, bus drivers and maintenance.
But not custodial?
Yeah, yeah, custodial and bus drivers, yeah.
This is the pass along in case you didn't sign for Debbie. Okay, pass it down to Sarah. What? Did you sign for Debbie?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Amherst Media, we're back.
Yeah, please give it up.
Thank you, okay. All right, calling the Amherst School Committee back to order, public session at seven oh two, all right. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Amherst Pelham and Amherst Pelham Regional School Committees and UFCW Local fourteen fifty-nine dated June fourth, twenty twenty-four, and also the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven contract with UFC Local fourteen fifty-nine consisting of the current twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four contract as modified by said MOA. Sir second.
Second.
Bridgette, thank you, all right. We'll take a, we don't need a roll call though, just, all right. Any more discussion? I think not, okay. Oh, Jennifer.
I just wanted to thank all of our food service workers for the great job that they do. I really appreciate that my child gets fed every day.
Yes, they are very dedicated. It was a pleasure to work with them all, with their team. All right, so all in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Thank you, five zero zero, it's unanimous, wonderful. All right, moving on, we have minutes, draft minutes of our previous meeting of May twenty-first. Does anyone have any edits or changes to propose? I had only one in the chair's update under H. In the first line, I would change the word and, excuse me, but to and, so that it reads, Ms. Marshall noted that she posted some very brief updates to board docs and she wants to announce that blah blah blah. Anything else?
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
Sir second.
Second.
Bridgette, thank you, all right. All in favor, raise your hands. It is unanimous, five to zero, to zero, thank you. All right, next, we have public comment. There were no written comments, there were no voice messages, and there is no one in the room besides us, so there is no public comment.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
In the instructions for public comment on board docs, I've noticed lately that it says all comments must be submitted by three P M. on brackets date of the meeting, and I assume that date of the meeting is supposed to be filled in with a date or not? Maybe we could just change it to say on the day of the meeting, so that it doesn't have to be updated every time.
Okay, I will speak to Debbie, I'm not sure where that boilerplate is, but thank you. Okay, so, moving right along to superintendent's update.
So not a tremendous amount, a few things, so that I will mention though. So we did alter our plans for today and have school end early with the heat. We'll have tomorrow off for Juneteenth, we'll come back and also do a half day on Thursday, that was already planned, but given the heat, we're also going to be very mindful of that, limit outdoor play, except for the very, very early morning. You know, we try to be conscientious and smart about that when it's as hot as it is and as humid as it is, and the air quality's sometimes not that great. It's actually, I think the air quality today is actually worse than it will be on Thursday, but we try to be careful and thoughtful about that. The other thing I'll share, and I think this is also in perhaps the chair's update, but I went to Wildwood Moving On or Moving Up Ceremony, depends on which school you're at. Today was a lovely event, I'll let Chair talk about that a little bit more. But the other day, I was also at the Crocker Farm event. You know, this time of year is filled with these kinds of things, it's a wonderful opportunity for celebration and recognition and to reflect on the growth and achievement of the kids. I wasn't able to go to Fort Rivers because it was conflicting with another thing, so I didn't get a chance to go to that one. I'm sure it was a lovely event as well, so those are all in process. But, yeah, school ends Thursday, and, you know, I think the kids are probably looking forward to it. And certainly, it's that time of year with the heat that's kicking in, so that's the thing I had. I think the other thing I'll just say, I think I said at the last bigger meeting, but I do want to thank all our staff and families and students for all their work throughout the year, and also just take a moment to recognize folks that are going to be retiring. There's a number of retirees every year, and some that people may notice a bit more than others, and so I just want to be cognizant of the efforts and sometimes full careers that people have spent with us and the impact they've had on promoting the education of youth in our town. So I want to share a sincere thanks to all of those folks that are retiring and hope they have a lovely, long, happy, healthy retirement, and that they come back and visit periodically. I saw Nick Yaffe today, it was really nice to see Nick. I don't think so, me, but, you know, it's nice to see folks that retire and come back and still kind of engage. And I saw Roger Wallace the other day at the Crocker Farm, so there's some folks that still come back and participate with us in some ways, and so we hope that all our retirees are comfortable and willing to do that.
Any questions for the superintendent? I wanted to ask, or, I mean, I assume, or I infer, that none of our elementary schools are air-conditioned, and that is the reason for the early dismissal? Or are some of them cool in some places but just can't keep up with this level of heat?
So, it varies. There are some spaces, usually, you know, office spaces that are truly air-conditioned or, you know, have heat pumps involved. Most of the classrooms are spaces that have some cooling, but I wouldn't call it, it's not air-conditioning in the classic sense, and so we're able to run what they call a chiller, which, you know, chills water and pumps it through the system and runs it through our unit ventilators, which are the sort of big behemoth things that sit in the machine, in the rooms, that in the wintertime produce heat, so we run warm water through and run, you know, air across those, bring in some fresh air and mix that in. In warmer weather, it's the reverse, we run cool water through them, and again, pass air over them to sort of cool the rooms. What that style of system, you know, struggles with is high levels of humidity and super high heat. They're not really built to truly do the full-blown air conditioning or refrigeration type of system. They're truly for cooling, which gets us where we need to be most of the time, but on days like this, especially when the humidity's high, it's difficult for the systems to really effectively, you know, sort of impact the temperature of the room. It's doable, but it's difficult. So there's some level of cooling, not fully air-conditioning would be the answer.
All right, thank you. So, yes, my very short chair's update is only one item, again, the Wildwood sixth grade Moving On Ceremony this morning, which was held outside, if you're familiar with the school, it was between the, you know, outdoor on the basketball court next to the gymnasium, and it was pretty well shaded, and there was a tent, and it was really lovely. And I particularly enjoyed that and the high school graduation, because this work, most of the time, we don't see the kids work on whose behalf we're working, so it's really wonderful to see them and how happy they are and proud they are of themselves and each other, and how much they love their teachers, so it was wonderful. Any updates from school committee members? I did not get any yet.
Oh, I just wanted to say, since this is the last Amherst School Committee meeting before the end of the school year, and specifically before Debbie Westmoreland retires, speaking of retirements, I wanted to thank Ms. Westmoreland for her service, her many years of service to the district. I have always found her to be extremely pleasant, knowledgeable, and competent to work with. In particular, she was a huge help in the superintendent's search with all of the logistics and the.
The same, oh, uh, bus drivers and maintenance.
But not custodial?
Yeah, yeah, custodial and bus drivers, yeah.
Did you sign for Debbie?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Amherst Media, we're back.
Yeah.
Thank you, okay, all right. Calling the Amherst School Committee back to order, public session at seven oh two, all right. I move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Amherst Pelham and Amherst Pelham Regional School Committees and UFCW Local fourteen fifty-nine dated June fourth, twenty twenty-four, and also the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven contract with UFC Local fourteen fifty-nine, consisting of the current twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four contract as modified by said MOA. Sir second.
Second.
Bridgette, thank you, all right. We'll take a, we don't need a roll call though, just, all right. Any more discussion? I think not, okay, oh Jennifer.
I just wanted to thank all of our food service workers for the great job that they do. Um, I really appreciate that my child gets fed every day.
Yes, they are very dedicated. It was a pleasure to work with them all, with their team. All right, so all in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Thank you, five zero zero, it's unanimous, wonderful. All right, moving on, we have minutes, draft minutes of our previous meeting of May twenty-first. Does anyone have any edits or changes to propose? I had only one. In the Chair's Update under H, in the first line, I would change the word and, excuse me, but, to and, so that it reads, Ms. Marshall noted that she posted some very brief updates to Board Docs, and she wants to announce that blah blah blah. Anything else?
I move to accept the minutes as amended.
Sir second.
Second.
Bridgette, thank you, all right. All in favor, raise your hands. It is unanimous, five to zero, to zero, thank you. All right, next, we have public comment. There were no written comments, there were no voice messages, and there is no one in the room besides us, so there is no public comment.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes.
In the instructions for public comment on Board Docs, it, I've noticed lately that it says all comments must be submitted by three P M. on brackets date of the meeting, and I assume that date of the meeting is supposed to be filled in with a date? Or not, maybe we could just change it to say on the day of the meeting, so that it doesn't have to be updated every time.
Okay, um, I will speak to Debbie, I'm not sure where that boilerplate is, but, thank you. Okay, so, moving right along to Superintendent's Update.
So not a tremendous amount, um, a few things, so, um, that I will mention though. So we did, uh, alter our plans for today and have school end early with the heat. We'll have tomorrow off for Juneteenth, uh, we'll come back and also do a half day on Thursday, that was already planned, uh, but given the heat, uh, we're, we're also going to, to be very mindful of that, limit outdoor play, told, except for the very, very early morning. You know, we, we try to be conscientious and smart about, about that, uh, when it's as hot as it is and as humid as it is, and the air quality's sometimes not that great. It's actually, I think the air quality today is actually worse than it will be on Thursday, but, you know, we try to be, uh, be careful and thoughtful about that. Uh, the other thing I'll share, and I think this is also in perhaps the Chair's Update, but, um, I've, uh, I went to Wildwood, uh, Moving On or Moving Up Ceremony, depends on which school you're at. Um, today was a lovely event, uh, I'll let Chair talk about that a little bit more. Um, but the other day I was also at the Crocker Farm, um, event. You know, this time of year is, is filled with these kinds of things, it's an, it's a wonderful opportunity for, for celebration and, uh, recognition and, and, uh, to reflect on the growth and, and achievement of the kids. Um, I wasn't able to go to Fort Rivers because it was conflicting with another thing, um, so I didn't, didn't get a chance to go to that one, I'm sure it was a lovely event, uh, as well, so those are all in process. But, yeah, school ends, uh, Thursday, and, uh, you know, I think the kids are probably looking forward to it. And certainly, uh, it's that time of year with the heat that's kicking in, so, um, that's the thing I had. I think the other thing I'll just, uh, say, I think I said at the last, uh, bigger meeting, but I do want to, to thank all our staff and, and, uh, you know, families and students for all their work throughout the year, and, and also just take a moment to recognize, uh, folks that are going to be retiring. Uh, there's a number of retirees every year, and, and some, uh, that people may notice a bit more than others, and so, uh, I just want to be, you know, uh, cognizant of the efforts and, and, uh, sometimes full careers that people have spent with us and, and the impact they've had, on, uh, on promoting the education of youth in, in our town. So I want to, uh, share a sincere thanks to all of those folks that are retiring, and hope they have a lovely, long, happy, healthy, uh, retirement, uh, and, uh, that they come back and visit us periodically. Uh, I saw Nick Yaffe today, it was really nice to see Nick. He didn't, I don't think so, me, but, you know, it's nice to see folks that, that retire and come back and still kind of engage, and I saw Roger Wallace the other day at the Crocker Farm, so there's some folks that still come back and, and, uh, and participate with us in some ways, and so we hope that all our retirees are, are comfortable and willing to do that.
Any questions for the Superintendent? I wanted to ask, or, I mean, I, I assume, or I infer that none of our elementary schools are air-conditioned, and that is the reason for the early dismissal, or are some of them cool in some places, but just can't keep up with this level of heat?
So, it varies, uh, there are some spaces, uh, usually, you know, sort of office spaces that are truly air-conditioned, or, you know, have heat pumps involved. Most of the classrooms, um, are spaces that have, um, some cooling, but I wouldn't call it, it's not air conditioning in the classic sense, and so we're able to run what they call a chiller, which, you know, chills water and pumps it through the, the system and runs it through our, uh, unit ventilators, which are the sort of big behemoth things that sit in the machine, i- in the rooms that, in the wintertime produce heat, so we run warm water through and run, you know, air across those, bring in some fresh air and mix that in. Uh, in warmer weather, it's the reverse, we run cool water through them, um, and again, pass air over them to sort of cool the rooms. What it, what tho- that type style of system, you know, uh, struggles with is, is high levels of humidity and super high heat. They're not really built to truly, uh, do the full-blown air conditioning or refrigeration type of system. Uh, they're, they're truly for cooling, which gets us where we need to be most of the time, but, uh, on days like this, especially when the humidity's high, it's, it's difficult for the systems to really, um, effectively, uh, you know, sort of impact the temperature of the room. It's, it's doable, but it's difficult. So, there's some level of, of cooling, not fully air conditioning would be the answer.
All right, thank you, so, yes, my very short Chair's Update, uh, is only one item. Again, the Wildwood Sixth Grade Moving On Ceremony this morning, which was held outside. Um, if you're familiar with the school, it was between the, you know, mm, outdoor on the basketball court, next to the gymnasium, and it was pretty well shaded, and there was a tent, and it was really lovely. And, and I particularly enjoyed that and the high school graduation, because, this work, most of the time, we don't see the kids work on whose behalf we're working, so it's really wonderful to see them and how happy they are and proud they are of themselves and each other, and how much they love their teachers, so, it was, it was wonderful. Any updates from school committee members? I did not get any yet.
Oh, I just wanted to say, since this is the last Amherst School Committee meeting before the end of the school year, and specifically before Debbie Westmoreland retires, speaking of retirements, I wanted to thank Ms. Westmoreland for her service, her many years of service to the district. I have always found her to be extremely pleasant, knowledgeable and competent to work with. In particular, she was a huge help in the superintendent's search with all of the logistics and the communications of the search, which she also added to, um, and brought her own, uh, added to and helped us with how to communicate with the community and how to engage with the community on the search, and I really, I really appreciate that. Thank you, Debbie.
I have a couple, I didn't send them in. I attended with some other school committee members the welcoming school ceremony, uh, at Crocker Farm on, excuse me, on Wednesday, and it was a lovely event in which we celebrate the, um, completion of this, uh, program that the preschool, classes, class.
And staff.
And staff completed over a three-year process. We're one of a very small number of schools to get the welcoming school seal of approval, and, um, the kids are apparently very eager to share what they've learned. So, and there's some beautiful artwork and just really an all-around affirming, um, positive experience, I think, for everyone.
Was there something else?
Yeah, but Bridgette wanted to say.
I just wanted to add on that, that H R C had told us that that was the first preschool that they'd certified, and so that's a very special accomplishment, I think, for our district.
So that's one. Two is there were some lovely, uh, Juneteenth events on Saturday that the, the town put on. It went on and on and on, and unfortunately, it's a tough time of year to attend all of them, but it was a nice community event. And, um, I, I feel like I should, and unfortunately, on a very sad note, but to mention that there will be a memorial service for Susan Raker, a longtime, um, teacher, paraprofessional at Fort River. She was my son Sam's, um, co-teacher, and I always remember her as being bright and positive and, uh, great loss to our community, and I think of her and her family and give them a lot of love, as many of our community members do in Fort River members. So that's Saturday, July twentieth at three, at the Second Baptist Church in South Hadley.
Anything else? Okay, um, on to the Paraeducator and Clerical Merit Awards, Jennifer.
So as part of the, um, contract with these two bargaining units, we have, uh, merit awards awarded to, um, paraeducators and clerical staff. Um, the process is that, um, anyone can submit, uh, uh, submit a nomination for an award, and then the committee that, um, reviews the awards is made up of human resources and A P E A member and a school committee member, and I'm the school committee member, thank you for allowing me to do that, it's the best job. Um, so we have five nominee, uh, five winners from amongst the nominees for paraeducators in the elementary schools, and they are Alicia Clemens, Kiana Lawton, Marcia Zutautis, Fakria Musawi, and Holly Day, and, um, they were all nominated by more than one person, and, which was, which is wonderful, and they, they, just reading the nominations is, is really wonderful, and it's a great way of, uh, it's, it's just a great peek into the schools that we don't usually get here on the school committee. Uh, if, all of, all of the nominees and all of the winners are wonderful, but the one, the thing that stuck out to me is regarding Fakria Musawi. She was nominated by one, two, three, four, five people, and one person said that she works amazingly with students of all ages and different profiles at needs. At Crocker Farm, we refer to Fakria Magic, everyone wants to work with her. And like, when you have a saying named after you, that's really special. And for the clerical awards, um, the two, um, nominees who were chosen to receive the award are Kathy Aldrich at Crocker Farm and Melissa Aguda at Wildwood. So I would move to, uh, approve the Paraeducator and Clerical Merit Awards.
Second, thank you, all right. Any questions or discussion?
Catherine, Al- Aldrich has been on the job, I think, as long as Debbie, and she has been a foundation for Crocker Farm for years.
Wonderful, all right, all in favor? It is unanimous. All right, next. Did you do both?
That was, that was, we did both.
Oh, I didn't, okay. Wonderful, thank you for that. All right, now we have to vote the, to approve the new Student Services Director. Doug, do you want to introduce that?
I can, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I know who it is, but.
It's a, it's a little bit of a formality at this point, since at the regional committee meeting, you did it. So one of the, one of the things with the school committee, uh, is the approval of a, a Special Education Director, the Student Service Director, that's one of the, the aspects of their role, and so it is an approval process that you guys undertake, relative to that. As you know, Fay Brady is one of our retirees. She'll be with us into July a little bit, but we, we, uh, we did a search and, and selected Doreen Reed, who's, who's been an employee with the district for a number of years, and, and she's going to move into that role starting July one. And so, uh, you know, we're looking forward to Doreen stepping into a new role for the district, and she's had a few different ones over the years and, and worked in some other environments, uh, separate from, from the Amherst schools, and so, uh, we're looking forward to her, her leadership in that department for the coming years.
Right, who would like to move this? Herb?
I'd like to move to, um, nominate, we want to name the name.
Doreen Reed.
Doreen Reed, um, as the, uh, Student Service Director, effective July one.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous, five to zero to zero, thank you. All right, on to summer plans and programming. That'll be Doug one.
This is.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm actually going to roll back to my notes I made earlier. So, um, so I'll focus primarily on the, on the elementary schools. Obviously, with, with Dr. Herman coming in, we'll be doing a fair amount of, of, uh, work with her in, in bringing her in, getting her up to, to, to speed on, on how, on what we are and who we are and, uh, all of that. That'll be part of our, our summer plans for sure, but I think I'll focus more on, on the kind of kid programming that we do over the course of the summer. There's, one, two, three, four, five, six, six specific programs that we run. Some of them are the same kind of program, but different duration, so, um, we have, uh, a special education for the elementary students that, we have a program that runs for four weeks, and we have a program that runs for six weeks. For our preschoolers, similarly, we have a four-week program for some preschoolers and a six-week program for some preschoolers. Our Combinates Program, our dual-language program, has a summer program where we, we can, uh, work with those students a little bit more, provide additional opportunity for, for those students and, and sustain the, the practice in the language, uh, over the summer. And then we run a, uh, a program we call Achievement Academy, uh, which is, uh, potentially partially funded by Title One and Title Three. And so that is, again, augmentative supports for kids, uh, you know, academic support. Uh, most of these programs run Monday to Thursday for about a half a day. We partner with, you know, uh, other programs, so there are, there are other summer programs that happen, uh, through Amherst Rec or independently, some of them happen in our buildings, some don't. Um, so we, we work in transportation that works well and partner with those programs, um, as well. All of these will be at Crocker Farm this summer, so by virtue of, of, our ability to kind of do a little bit of cooling work, work on our cooling system at, at Crocker, which is literally going to be working through the end of the month to get that, that tidied up a little bit, there, there's been some need there. We're going to try to have all of those programs, uh, those elementary programs in, in the Crocker Farm building this summer. That makes transportation easier, that makes the food service easier, so one of the things we also do over the course of the summer is provide, we do a, a summer food service program, so S F S P, which is a, is a, a variant or in addition to, uh, to the sort of school lunch program that we do during the year. It allows us to provide meals, uh, to students. And, and, uh, you know, there are other branches of that that occur in other parts of town. Some of it by U Mass, they provide, uh, some of theirs, they have food trucks to go around and provide meal service. Uh, we have some of our programs in our buildings and are allowed to, and are able to provide meals to students in that regard. But what it, what it really does force in, in Crocker is allow, uh, an efficient delivery of service and, and, uh, provide meals and, and, and food to, to students participating in those programs. So it's an opportunity to, again, support, uh, families and students in ways that, that, uh, you know, aren't always what people think about when they think of school, but, you know, feeding kids is, is one of the things we do, uh, in, in order to be able to educate them, and so, uh, we have an opportunity to do that as well. And like I said, we try to partner with and, and, and coordinate with our, uh, our town rec department to, to connect in with their programs and, and have kids be able to access and, and participate in those as well as part of that. It's not officially school-based programs, but we do, uh, coordinate our efforts with them, uh, as we go through the, through the summer. And what else did I want to say about summer program? I think that's the main things I wanted to offer, obviously, any questions you guys have, I'll, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions from the committee? I have a couple, I'll start. Are these, any of these programs, they're clearly for, obviously, the preschool program, it's for preschoolers, but are, in general, are they invitation-only? Or by, or rather by invitation, or just open to anyone who wishes to participate?
Yeah, the specialized programs are generally driven by the, the nature of the, uh, I E P, the Individual Education Plan for the student and the supports we need to do. If we have, for some reason, not met all our requirements, we can, we can do what's called compensatory services over the summer. Sometimes we, we, we take the opportunity of the summer to, to do that. Often that's separate from these programs, these are generally about providing continuing support for students, uh, throughout the summer months. And, you know, we, just to sort of, I think, drill into where you're going with some of this, is that there's, there's some grant funding for some of this, and there's also some appropriated funding for this. So we, we carry some of the costs, and we also have some, some, uh, entitlement grants like Title One and Title Three and I D A that, that helps support these. But we also use, you know, some of our own resources to provide, uh, the supports to kids. This year, um, you know, and, uh, you know, we are, we are going to charge a little tuition, uh, in the Combinates Program. I don't think any of the others have a tuition. We, we've been able to provide the Combinates Program without that. In years past, we had some grant funding that was available to us. The state shifted how their funding dual-language grants for districts were a little more mature than ours, and so there's less resource available to us, uh, so we had to find an alternative way. Now, we've got some supports for it as well, from our own funding, and we need a little bit of help from families, so we tried to find a, a mechanism for supporting that program, uh, in the most cost-effective way possible, and, and thoughtful about, you know, what, what, uh, families can afford and try to be as, you know, the, the goal with that is to, to be, um, sort of need-blind in some respects as best we can, so that kids that want to go can go.
Right, so these are being funded out of the F Y twenty-five budget?
Yes, they're all F Y twenty-five, because, uh, they, the programs start, um, first of July, actually, with the fourth being on a Thursday, we'll actually have a very short week, that very first week of July. Often we start after the fourth, but it falls differently. This year, we're going to get a couple of days in before, and then, like I said, most of them are mornings, uh, well, they're all morning programs, but most of them are Monday through Thursday, um, uh, programming for the kids.
All right, I'll ask a question about the, the meals, so there is a variety of meals programs. I know that during the pandemic, there was a huge effort to get food, not just to all kids during the summer, but I think families too, I'm not sure, or available to anybody who wanted to, to pick it up. So, who is being fed through these programs?
So the participants in the programs are definitely being fed. Now, of course, you ask, and I had this conversation with our Food Service Director the other day, and I'm not recalling the details about, because there's a couple of different ones, and we've run a couple of different ones over the course of the summer, and I'm not recalling off the top of my head whether or not we're doing the more extensive one, where, um, you can set up the program so that you have, uh, certain sites, and if you're eighteen years or under, you can show up and get a meal. I think we'll be doing that some, I don't know that all of our sites will be that way, but we, I, I believe we're going to have at least one site, if not a couple of sites, and again, the program that U Mass is a, sort of a partner in, uh, is that as well, and so they publish when they're, you know, what days they're going to be where, at what times, and, and essentially, if you walk up and you're under eighteen, you can have a meal.
So is our effort coordinated with theirs?
Yeah, we do, we do connect with them, so that we're not in, in conflict. There's, there's, you know, specific sites that are eligible in the, in the program, so that's some of what limits what we do, and, and of course, then, we definitely are in, in connection with the folks at U Mass to, to coordinate those efforts and try to get meals to where people are and where they need them.
Thank you, anyone else? Nope. Okay, thank you, all right. Superintendent transition, onboarding, et cetera, our entry plan. This is a placeholder, I was, I'm hoping, I was hoping to have some updates maybe on dates for retreats. I don't have anything, but Doug, do we have a date certain for the first day?
So I was talking to Debbie Westmoreland about that today, and, and about the planning schedule, because, you know, one of the things, um, in years past, when we've had that sort of first-day celebration, we usually do the evening before the first day of school, often school starts on a Wednesday. This year, we're starting on a Monday, so it's a little different. So she and I were talking about that, and it's like, is that likely we're going to do that on Sunday? And she goes, yeah, I think we're going to have to run that on a Sunday. And one of the things, part of the reason I was asking about this, besides the topic for tonight, was also just, we want to make sure to reserve, uh, uh, Kendrick Park or, or, and/or the Common. We've used the Common in years past, last year we used Kendrick Park, I think a lot of people really liked that, because it has a small play structure area there, um, so we may do Kendrick Park again. But we'll need to get on sort of the town's list and reserve it, you know, uh, so that we can make sure to guarantee that. But she said it's basically ready for school ends, which is this week. We make those phone calls and start that process of actually reserving the spot, uh, with the town. So those, those plans will start to be developed as, as, uh, you know, literally starting later this week, uh, to get that scheduled. But the, the school starts on, I believe it's twenty-second of August, it'd be the twenty-first, would be that Sunday, if, if I'm recalling correctly from the calendar.
And could someone, Debbie, maybe, um, just let us know when the date, when the date is solidified?
Yes, yes.
Even if before there's a general announcement to the public, maybe, so we can plan on that, and, um, hopefully before too long, talk with Dr. Herman about how we might make that into more of a, I mean, all that it normally is, but perhaps also, you know, a meet and greet for the new superintendent, so. Jennifer.
I, I thought, I thought you were asking about Dr. Herman's first day, which is.
No, I'm sorry, oh, gosh, no, this is a back-to-school event.
Oh, no, I know, but we're on the topic of Superintendent Transition, and I thought you said, is there a day for the first? Oh, the first day, gotcha, I thought you meant her first, I'm sorry. Okay, so July first is her first day, right, okay, gotcha.
That one, I think we know, yes, I'm sorry, that was very unclear. Those were capital letters, I guess, that didn't come through.
I do have a question about Superintendent Transition and Onboarding. I heard that two consultants were hired to advise the Superintendent, is that true? And can Doug tell us about that?
We don't have anyone under contract at the moment, I mean, some ideas have been discussed, and I, I think I need to work with, you know, and I've mentioned it to, um, to Dr. Herman about, about that, and, and, thinking about what, what she wants or needs as far as support as she gets started, so I think it's, it's a distinct possibility. There's some, you know, folks from the community, there's, there's a number of different kinds of mentoring that, that, you know, she may want to take advantage of, and, and so, um, I think as she gets into it, she'll start to think through that. We haven't gotten formal, I guess, would be the way to say that. There's certainly a couple of folks that, that we've talked to or thought about, and, and, uh, and then there's others, you know, um, more broadly, you know, M A S S has reached out, I think the Collaborative will likely as well, you know, a lot of people will be offering plenty of advice and, and, and support, really, and I think it's, you know, we'll, we'll work with her and try to sort through what, what's going to support her best.
Great, thank you.
I, I just have a question for those who've, the, um, who've been school committee members for a while about retreats. Did you ever have a retreat of this committee or only for the regional committee? Do you even remember?
I don't remember any for the Amherst, but definitely for the region.
You agree?
Yeah, same, I don't, I don't recall, which doesn't mean, doesn't mean, I only remember having one for the region, and it was here, and it was a half-day. We should, we could maybe talk about that, because a retreat, what is, what even is a retreat? How is it different from a meeting? It's still public, so it's still a public meeting, so like, what, what would we even do at a retreat? Like, these are things that I think we should talk about, if we're going to have a retreat, what would be the objective?
Right.
What would be the agenda?
Yeah, um, my, and, and that's one reason it's here, because I'm not, well, wh- I think it could be useful in being, um, more free-ranging conversation about the schools, about what happens, what's going on, what's, you know, what's coming up, without a strict agenda, as we'll talk about this, without a strict agenda, as we'll talk about this and we'll talk about this and this. But perhaps we should have, let's say, five topics or five general questions to just to move the conversation along. Or maybe, I I mean, I would want to speak with Dr. Herman about what she would find valuable for meetings such as this. But I'd like to hear your thoughts and if everyone's thoughts, and if it's not something that seems particularly useful, then we just wait for our first committee meeting, but I I think it would be good.
It really would depend on when we would be having this, A and B, whether the region would be having one, because I would see some overlap there. So I I I'd really want, I wouldn't want to have one just for Amherst and then one for the region because of what I consider to be some overlaps, and other people may have different opinions. But having one is definitely important. The only other question I have is, when would that be?
Well, that's that's going to be a challenge. Everybody's summer schedules. I haven't asked any of you for your schedules because, I mean, until there's no reason, no reason to ask until it's time to ask because Dr. Herman hasn't suggested any dates yet. Bridget?
So I would think, you know, that we want to be thinking about strategic planning, like for ourselves as a committee, how that aligns with the goals we've set for the superintendent, because the more we can all be pushing in the same direction, you know, that's how institutions show focus and move forward. So in terms of like the content, those are my thoughts. And I would just make a case, just for the fun of it, that the elementary schools are really separate and have separate needs and separate constituencies, et cetera, than the region. And so that at least some space for that separate conversation would be important.
Thank you. You mentioned superintendent goals. We, she doesn't, no goals have been set. Do you mean starting a conversation about what the goals might be?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then, you know, sort of aligning.
Yeah.
I think one of the things that committees have done in the past is is, I think there's a couple of things. So one is, you know, it's an opportunity to to get together and sort of reaffirm your own process and procedure with each other, sort of, you know, norms of behavior, common common approach to how you'll generally, you know, conduct yourselves at meetings, that kind of, you know, it can be really sort of functional in that way. And I think the the other thing is is to start to sort of develop the sort of themes or topics that are of importance to the committee, because then I think that would be used, and I think it's been used in the past to help shape the development of goals. So I think it's it's a way for you guys to kind of bring some ideas and coalesce around some some action items for the superintendent. So I think that's really helpful and guiding. I've certainly done it on other boards that I've served on to to have that kind of a conversation about what, you know, what's the sort of trajectory of work we want to try to accomplish? How do we align the the, you know, in this case, the superintendent to to those tasks? You know, can be really, really helpful. And then the goals can, you know, that's can get much more specific and mechanical after that first, you know.
So much of what you described seems not to involve the superintendent. So are do committee retreats generally only include committee members? Is that or?
They can go either way. I think they usually do include the the superintendent. The superintendent's often very passive participant, you know, in that they're more of a list in a listing mode. I mean, that's certainly the the what the kinds of retreats I've been on in in boards and committees has been where that executive is 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 there to listen and and understand the the sort of dialogue and and discussion amongst the board members. But it's a lot faster if they hear it firsthand than than if you then write minutes and have that conversation later. So I think that's, it's helpful to have them there. I think it's, you know, their participation is a little more on the passive side, I would suggest generally.
Jennifer?
So there's now, I'm remembering what what we did in the one retreat that I attended, which was that it was about how we work together as a committee. And I think we even did a self-evaluation of how we work together as a committee as part of the retreat. And so it was about evaluating ourselves and how how our our processes work. And I agree with Irv that it makes sense, it may make sense to do a multi-committee joint retreat with Amherst, Palom, and the region because there is overlap. So the other ideas off the top of my head, I I might suggest that you talk to MASC about some norms or guidelines for holding a retreat. Because my one understanding of a retreat is that it's unlike a meeting and that there are no decisions. There's no voting, there's no, there's no votes to be made, no decisions. But I also think that means no deliberating necessarily. So I don't know that starting to think about strategic planning or the superintendent's goals is necessarily appropriate for a retreat. That should happen in a meeting. So, but I'm not sure. And and so, but I but I do recall the focus on how we how we operate as a committee when it comes to a retreat. That's what the focus of the retreat is.
Can I ask you before you go on about that? Do you have, do you remember whatever the tool was or like, did you just, did you discuss it then afterwards?
Yeah.
Or you just?
It was an online form, and we we, I don't, I don't really recall. We evaluate, there were some questions, and we evaluated ourselves. I don't know, maybe Debbie might have the, Debbie Westmoreland might have the actual form. So I guess, so, yeah, I guess my suggestion would be to talk with MASC about some goals and, or not goals, but guidelines and best practices about a school committee retreat. The other thing I'm thinking is that Dr. Herman hasn't worked with a school committee in Massachusetts before, and there are state laws and guidelines about how about what's a superintendent's responsibility and what's a school committee's responsibility. And I assume, I hope, I assume that she'll get that training and mentoring, maybe through MASS. But maybe we invite someone from MASC to give a little overview, if it's a joint retreat, about about that topic, like superintendent's responsibilities versus school committee, and then like talk about how we how we operate as a committee, how we interact with the superintendent, how we work together, et cetera. So those are just off the top of my head ideas.
Any other ideas, Doug? Deb?
I I think just really building on what Jennifer said, defining clearly or as clearly as we can that the roles and how they relate to each other, the expectations. I mean, in the details of each meeting, it's important for all of us to kind of keep the structure in mind. So I think it'd be a great opportunity to review that, to establish those and.
Expectations, like for me, for our committee meetings, like?
No, what the school committee does and doesn't do, what the superintendent does does not do, and how we interact with each other in our respective roles around the stewardship of the of the schools.
Thank you. All right, well, thanks for that. I'll mull it all over. If you think of anything else that occurs to you or, you know, just drop me an email. Okay. All right, on to school choice slots, what we know and don't know.
So, as people can hear me, so the we are a school choice district. We will do our lottery on the 28th of June. The 27th is when applications close. We'll be collecting applications until the 27th. We'll probably, on the 27th or 28th, have a final conversation about how many actual seats we'll really, really offer. So it's it's a bit of a, you know, I don't mean to be insincere about it, but but it is one of those things where we're trying to gather as much information we can about resident students, whether they're kids that are in our district that we're we're gonna, are telling us they're leaving or staying, folks that are moving to the area that have called up and asked questions of our of our of our buildings and our staff about, oh, I think I'm living in the Crocker Farm area. Can I, you know, what's, can I come see the school? Can I find out about the, you know, that kind of thing? So, you know, until they actually come in and register and prove that they are residents of the town and that sort of thing, you know, we won't know, but but we're sort of keeping them in mind as as they sort of indicate they might be moving to town or or living in a particular, you know, zone within within our district. So, you know, we'll take really all the time we've got to to evaluate that and then look at at what seats we have potentially available for in what grades. And and so we're keeping in mind, you know, the the, you know, the trajectory of of where we'll be in a couple of years with a different number of buildings and our sixth grade, you know, not being in those two buildings and et cetera, et cetera. So we're, you know, that's a part of the calculus as well. We want to make sure that we're, you know, sort of maintaining, you know, the the kind of structure and support, not over overfilling classrooms in ways that end up costing us more extensively than what we expect. All that said, when we last did sort of a count of what we thought might be available, and this will probably go down a little bit. We were in a maximum number of seats in the Amherst around 30 or 31. That might shrink a little bit. I haven't, I mean, that was a couple of weeks ago when we last sort of, you know, counted noses, as it were. But I think we'll we'll, you know, I think there's some trends that are are intriguing, I will say, or perhaps worrying in some way. Not in a bad way. It's just, you know, maybe it's a fortunate thing, folks are signing up early. So there's, you know, some registration numbers in some of our our locations are a little higher than they've traditionally been at this time. And that's a good thing because then we have all the paperwork done. And it makes us, you know, cautious about what to expect over the course of summer. So we're we're taking a, you know, close look at that over the over the coming weeks. Do, you know, obviously encourage anybody who's interested in school choice to please apply and indicate your preferences of 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 location and what grades you need and that sort of thing. And so we'll make the, you know, sort of final determinations as we get to the to the end of the month and and actually ready to do our lottery. We did the lottery in June partly so that we can notify people. Sometimes you notify folks that are lottery winners, and they go, you know, we're going to go a different direction. We're going to do something different. We thought we were going to do this. We're going to say no to that. So then you have, you know, refill. And then also, so people have time to plan and make sure that they can do the things they need to do regarding, you know, the transportation, et cetera, for the for the fall. So we want to give everybody as much time as possible to get set up and 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 be prepared for their their school choice education with the Amherst schools.
So I I assume that, well, I don't know. Do we ever rescind an an offer, like if this class suddenly fills up with new residents in town?
No, if we make, if we make the offer, we're, we made the offer. We're sort of on the hook for that. So, you know, that's why we're very cautious. And we try to, you know, we leave a little, you know, the.
You leave empty seats.
We have targets in, you know, for for class size. We try to make sure that there's a a little bit of a building in case people move to town because people move down all summer. We're trying to be thoughtful and careful about that. So we're pretty conservative on how many seats we open because it's better to come in a little below than a little high. So I think that, you know, that's part of what we're trying to do is to strike that balance so we're not in an uncomfortable circumstance of of overfilling a class. It still happens, you know. Somebody moves to town with triplets in third grade or something like that, and it does happen. Those things do happen. And suddenly, you're like, oh, my goodness, wow, we're really at a limit of what we can do there. That happens. We we obviously try to avoid it if at all possible, but it does does come up sometimes.
Any questions?
There's a moving date for what school choice students in the elementary school get grandfathered in to be allowed to go to the region? Do you happen to know what it is?
Fall of 2026. So it, so the 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 law didn't change the way the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education interpreted the law changed. And so they grandfathered people in. And so the the impact hits in in the fall of 2026. What I'm hopeful of is that they modify. I I I think there are some districts where that, you know, interpretation is fine. It works for them. I think in in districts like ours, we've had a lot of success with that grandfathering sort of circumstance. We find that helpful and planful. We have good communication and connection with all of our our member towns that go into our regional schools. So I'd love for them to modify things and allow us to to have the flexibility to go into agreements with the communities to do that, but it's not there at present. When that happens, just I'll paint the rest of the picture. It's like when that kicks into account, if kids that are school choice in our elementary schools want to be school choice in our, you know, our regional schools, they'll have to reenter a lottery, so there's no guarantee of a seat. And we'll have to be accepting, the regional school district will make the decision about whether it's accepting school choice and how many seats in what grades. And then there'll be a lottery for that.
So somebody.
Follow up?
Somebody could choice in for the next two years, but only stay in. How's it work if somebody is already in the system, though? So do they, so so if somebody choiced in this year in first grade, they have two more years and then?
No, it's not until we, they change districts that it's, it becomes an issue. They can remain in choice all the way through.
Of course, yeah, no, no, that makes sense.
And and one of the things that we do when we notify people is that it is, we are explicit in telling them that they are not guaranteed a seat in the regional school by virtue of the change in interpretation. So they know that going in.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Budget, transfers and adjustments.
So I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance to see this any sooner than this afternoon. It just, it took us that long to sort of get a chance to sort of go through the numbers. I will say this, in looking at at where we sit today relative to finishing out fiscal '24 for the Amherst schools, we're looking like we're landing right on budget. You know, some years, we we are pretty clear that we have a some 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 excess capacity. I think we're going to land right on, kind of right on the number. It's going to be pretty close. It's it's, you know, there's still lots of things to sort of sort through. I'm going to spend some more time later in the week with 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 business office staff. We're going to go through it a little more closely and and see what we can. And and the hardest thing at this point was, you know, it's it's the 18th of June, you know. You know, we try to have everything identified that we're looking to be spending money on in the course of the of the last month of the fiscal year, and yet stuff still happens. And so we want to be, you know, something that somebody forgot about that, like, oh, yeah, this, you know, we are going to use all of that encumbrance, or or, oh, we thought it was going to be 3,000, it's 3,500. And so you have those, you know, variabilities that come in at the at the end as as the real costs sort of play out over the last little bit of the of the fiscal year. So we're going to take a fine-tooth comb through it. Right now, where we sit, we're sitting right on, you know, right on budget, which is, you know, good and bad. I don't think, I'm not panicked about where we sit at the moment. I'm not worried that we're suddenly going to be way under, you know, way over budget. That's that, I don't, I do not see us in that position. But you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of extra, is I guess the way to say it at this point. I mean, there could be things that I'm not considering, you know, that we, when we look at it more closely over the next coming weeks, next few weeks, we'll we'll refine that a little bit. But the long story short is, we're on budget. What's detailed here in the memo is some sort of movement of 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 some resources from areas that have capacity to areas that that need a little more capacity. We talk about this in each of the quarterly reports, the ones that that look to be a little over budget. So increases are ones that need support, decreases are ones that have capacity to to provide support. Some of them kind of tie together. So, for example, facilities is needing a pretty hefty amount of support. But if you look at like utilities and food service, that kind of offsets a little bit. You'll notice that Crocker Farm, Fort River and Wildwood have some capacity. Those are are circumstances. So that that captures actually a a host of of expenses in those buildings. Mostly, there are things, again, this expense is not not people. So it's expenses like curriculum materials, instructional supplies, that sort of thing. But you'll also notice that that there's a program development slash other, which is also where we deal with like curriculum materials or, you know, instructional materials. So we did a little more spending on the on the district side and a little less at the building-specific side. So that's, you know, sort of the same, we're still spending the money kind of in the same way originally we're we're planning on. It's just a little more from a district lens as opposed to a school-based lens. You know, you know, need for increase in transportation, gas price is a little higher than we had budgeted for, a little more repair cost than we were anticipating there. Salaries are are in in okay shape. Salaries are, are in, in okay shape, our contracted salaries are a lot higher. Contracted salaries, you know, the, the big one there that we've, we've been spending on is, is around some, some of support for transportation. So
For special ed?
Somewhat special ed. So, so if we do bus and van monitoring for some kids, that's included. We've had some need, because of the number of students that need that support, we've needed some coordination. So we had to sort of add a person to kind of help coordinate, make sure we've got the, the people in place to support the kids on those, on those transportation. So those things have added to our costs in, in that area. Substitutes, of course, are, are, are something we've identified throughout the year that are running a little, a little above. Hoping with the, with the change of the rules in, in, and around COVID that, that as we head into next year, that, that that will be returning to a little more classic levels. So we won't need that level of support.
Sorry, can you explain the connection between that and COVID?
So, so COVID, so until I want to say April, but it may have been March. If you were, if you tested positive for COVID, you had to take five days off before you could even potentially return to work. And so now it's, it's more based on symptoms. And so it doesn't and so, so one of the things is that for folks that have been immunized, if they get COVID, they may, the duration of it is a lot less. The symptoms aren't severe, et cetera, et cetera. And so to be out five days, you know, the, the CDC is recommending a little less now. So that gives us, that's fewer days of coverage we need. So you, you know, when you talk about a district of, of our size, those couple of days here and there can be real difference makers in helping out. So I, you know, those are all things that are sort of contributing needs to shift some, some, some funding. What else shall I say about it? But mostly it's, it's just kind of the, you know, we, we put a budget together. We think that's how we're going to spend our money and what we think we're going to need to do. And, and then, you know, then on July one, reality kicks in. We, we sort of cope with circumstances as they arise. And, and so that requires us to make some adjustments. And so this gives you some indication of, of where Q four is coming in. We'll do a full quarter four report when we get to, to probably September before we actually see it. But what this allows us to do, you know, is to move some money from, you know, budget areas that have resource to budget areas that don't have resource, just to balance things out. But again, the, the long story short is that we're, we're going to finish our budget kind of right on the money, it looks like right at the moment. And, and, you know, this allows us to, to kind of balance these specific areas of, of budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions people have about it.
So my eyes, my eye goes to the big numbers. So the contracted salaries line, what's the driver of that?
So some of it's, so contracted salaries are, are salaries paid to staff for things. Sometimes it's summer school stuff. Sometimes it's, so some of the summer school that, that we were just talking about earlier, some of the staff pay is, is in that contracted salaries. That was pretty much on target at what we thought, maybe a little higher, you know, depends on how much we leverage some of those grants. So that's a piece. But more of it, I think, in, in that regard, under contracted salaries, is some supports for kids in around transportation. So that's external to their base contract work. When they, you know, ride a van or ride a bus with a student to support them on their way home. And, you know, and we, we pay staff for that. And, and in regard to that, the, the number of kids that need that support increased this year. And so we also needed to coordinate those folks because, you know, not everybody can do that kind of coverage every single day. They often say, yes, I can, but then they're out sick, so somebody else has to cover. So then, you know, we needed someone to help make sure we had the coverage in the places we needed it. So that was an additional add to, add to cost that we had anticipated when we started the year. So those are, those are the biggest driver of those, of those contract, you know, contracted salaries being above expectations there.
So it's extra pay for employees doing additional work?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So it's not like you're contracting out?
No, 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 this, this is our staff.
According to the contract.
Yeah, it's not, it's, you know, we often see in some of the other things, contracted services, this is different from that.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so I do want to draw that distinction. These are our staff, it's, it's things that we contract with them to do.
Gotcha.
Sort of above and beyond their base work with us.
Great, thank you. Can I?
Yeah.
My, the other big numbers are in the decrease column, utilities and risk and benefits. Can you describe why they had excess capacity?
So, you know, mild winter doesn't hurt us. So we have an anticipated, you know, amount of heating oil that we're going to buy or gas that we're going to buy. And so we're fortunate there that those came in a little, little less. Our estimates for electricity and, and water, thank you, are also, you know, have come in a little bit under. But the bigger piece of that is, is, is in around heating oil. We just didn't have, you know, as many days that needed as much of that. So that heating oil and gas costs are a little bit less and that's given us some capacity there. The other one was, oh, risk and benefits. So when we talked about contracted services, one of the things is if we have open positions, you know, if you have open positions, we're not paying their salary, we also don't pay for their health insurance if they have it. So some of that can be driven by what choices people make about health insurance. So we make estimates about what, you know, how many plans we're going to have of each different kind, you know, family versus individual, that sort of thing. You know, as it looks right now, we're, we're in good shape. There are other things in risk and benefits as well, there's other insurance, et cetera, none of those in that way, but mostly under, under there that where it's, it's a positive impact is, is our, our costs, our actual cost for health insurance, whether it be retirees or, or active staff, is trending a little under what we anticipated would be the case for the year. So that's really where the, the resource is there. Yeah.
Anyone else? I wanted to ask about food service because I thought all that was in a revolving fund and had to stay in the fund. So how can you take money out of?
Right, so, so for food service, so we have in, in years past, and we have supported food service, we have needed to support food service with appropriated funds. So in other words, the sort of revenues we generated from reimbursements from the state and federal government around meals served and the costs were, were negative. We were, you know, basically if you're running a restaurant, you'd be losing money. And so we, we would have an estimated amount of, of support for food service that we build into our budget. We don't need that support, so we can use that funding for elsewhere. And if you recall, for fiscal twenty-five, we took the number that, you know, like we typically use number about seventy thousand in the Amherst budget. We shrink that down to like seventy-five hundred or something like that, I forget right off the top of my head, but we shrunk it like ninety percent. Just because we anticipate the, the support is going to be such we won't need that. And we probably don't even need that little bit that we, we budgeted for that. But, but anyway, so that's where that comes from.
Thank you. Bridgette?
Just when you look at it overall, Doug, does it inform you in any way as to where you could get cost savings next year by like planning ahead for something or doing something different? Like when you look at it, what's your, what's your analysis on that?
Yeah, so, so when we go to build the budget for next year, you know, there's some things that are unique to the year you're in. Something comes up that you're just, you know, shows up an expense you didn't anticipate or costs a lot less than you anticipate, that kind of thing. And we also look at sort of how things are trending over time. So, you know, when we go to build the next budget, we're definitely looking at those things. What are, what are known increases that we're starting to see? Are we keeping pace with inflation on our software costs, on our, our insurance, you know, costs, on our audit costs, on our whatever? And at the same time, are we overestimating certain things? Do we just don't use some things that we used to use? And so as we build the budget, we go through, part of that review exercise is to look at trends within really line by line to see if there are ways that we can save or see it. You know, we occasionally see things that, that you know, have a sort of cause effect, you know. We've done it as much in the elementary, we've done some lighting replacement over the years and it's like, oh, wait, we use, we truly use less electricity when you change the lights out to these lower LEDs and that kind of thing. We have seen those kind of things, we will continue to see those. We often will let it play out a year or so before we really sort of make a real true adjustment down. You know, you know, electricity rates have been, you know, trending upward. We, you know, we made some adjustment a couple of years ago. We've still been holding steady within those estimates. You know, I know that the, you know, the town council, I didn't watch this part of the meeting, but they had on their agenda to change the water and sewer rates for the coming year. We pay those just like any other customer. So that will probably, you know, affect us as well. So we try to anticipate all those things as we go along. Yeah, and we, and we look for things that are either outliers, like is that unique? Anytime we're way off in a budget, is it, do we understand why? Is it something unique? Or is it something that's going to be systemic that we need to, you know, accommodate for? The, the tricky thing is you sort of learn that information after you've already set the budget for the following year. So it's really the year after that that you can make the real adjustment. So there's that kind of lag for a year or so on some of those adjustments. But, but, yeah, we're, we're trying to analyze, especially when things are way out of whack. Do we know the reason why? We definitely look at that and, and try to understand, is this, you know, do we understand why? Is there something we can do about it? And, and see if we can take action around that or, or, you know, alter how we go about doing our work.
All right, are we ready to vote? Okay. So I move to modify the FY twenty-four operating budget by making budget transfers between cost centers as shown in the interim superintendent's memo dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Jennifer, thank you. Any more discussion? All right then, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Oh, yes, the audit review, just FY twenty-two, I believe.
Actually, twenty-three got in there as well. It reads almost identically to twenty-two. So here's spoiler alert, these are both the most boring audits ever. No, it's, it's, you know, that's great news. But the twenty-three, we were, we were just double checking to make sure we had the, the, the sort of final version of the twenty-three report in hand. So for Amherst Elementary School, because we are a department of the town of Amherst, the full financial audit is the town's audit. And they do that at town council, you often get a copy of it. But it's really more about them stating their financials properly. We provide information for that purpose, we provide information for them. They also get, you know, grants at a high enough level that they do what's called a single audit report, which has to do with your federal expenditure. We provide information for that. The parts that, that's really school-based is the end of year report. I know Jennifer asked for a copy of those, I'm going to get those to you. So I will get those, those to the, to you. And anybody else that wants them, the, the interview report is a fairly extensive amount of reporting that we send to the state. They have, you know, their particular way that they want to see expenses. And so we have to crosswalk from how we've got ourselves structured to how they are. And we make the best alignment we can in that process. And, and so that's part of what, what is evaluated when they, when they do the audit is, is do you have reasonable process and procedure for identifying how you're spending your money and reporting it to the state? And are you, are you articulating what you're doing accurately to the state? And, and following your process and procedures on that? And so, you know, the, the first two pages are, you know, the, the litany of what they do and don't do in the process of the audit. They don't check every single transit, transaction. They do look fairly closely at the interview report, it's a fairly large document, but then do take a fair, fairly deep dive into it. And as you go through these documents, when you get to the, you know, sort of the third page is where they sort of get into the nitty gritty, where they talk about specific kinds of compliance type of things. And the results columns are when you want to look at. By and large, if there was any problem, they would note it on the results section. And they would, they would articulate if there was a problem there. So when you see procedure performed without, without exception, that's a good sign. That means we're, we're, we have a process and we follow it and that is okay with them. The other thing that you will see periodically through this is, is a not applicable, no amendments required, not applicable, it's not something we did. You'll see, I think those are the primary two that you see throughout this. You know, some things just don't apply to us in our circumstance. And so what we're looking for, you know, in, in this interview report audit is, is for this kind of report, quite frankly. Obviously, if they find something, we want to know about it. This is an opportunity for us to get better at our work and make sure that we're, we're following good process and procedures to, to record and, and share with the state. You know, how we're spending the resources of the community as well as the, the grants and other funds that we get. And so for both twenty-two and twenty-three, they're very clean audits for our interview report. In other words, what we reported to the state is reflective of what actually happened. And the process we go through to do that, they felt was, was in good order and good shape. And if it were not, they would let us know and we would, you know, either take corrective action or, or, you know, review and, and modify our, our process and procedure to, to adjust accordingly. So I think with that, I'll stop and, and answer any other questions you might have about either one of the two audits for fiscal twenty-two or twenty-three.
I am, I gather you send the, let's say, end of year report twenty-two. Like when after June of, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, is that report submitted to the state?
So it's due to the state on September thirtieth. And then once that's, you know, in place, then the auditors can start at that point to sort of take it into consideration and evaluate it.
And then does the state get the audit or it's just for us?
No, they are, they do send the audit to the state as well. So yes, the state does want to see that, that the audit was completed, that there were no findings, that there were, you know, sort of any corrective actions that were necessary were taken, any adjustments to the interview report were done. So you can file the interview report and while it's sort of set in stone at that point, there is a mechanism for making changes. So if something, you know, you just made a mistake and got something wrong, transpose numbers, whatever it is, you can go in and make amendments to it. The state does use that for a, a number of different purposes. So, you know, they, they look at your transportation costs and evaluate the ones that are reimbursable. In an elementary circumstance, that's none of the, none of the costs. That wasn't always the case. I think once upon a time, there were reimbursable costs at the, at the municipal level, but they, they stopped that. But there are other things that they use that data for in evaluating components for, you know, for planning at the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, for funding levels, et cetera, et cetera. So, and then for comparison purposes, they've got a whole set of, of, of tools at this, at the state level for, for looking at your district versus others. There's some ways in which those, those reports, those per pupil expenditure reports are a little tricky to look at. They look, they're better, they'll sort of less detailed, I think they're more accurate. When they get into more detail, you know, like a specific line item, they can get a little interesting. Example I always give, I looked up one time, so, you know, we have a reported per pupil expenditure regarding HR expense, human resources expense. And this is a better example for the regional schools because it's a standalone, fully financial entity on its own. So you can articulate that cost pretty precisely because we have an HR department, right? But then you look at a municipal district like Hadley, nothing against folks in Hadley. But, you know, you go and look and their HR expense is zero dollars. So, you know, and you know, that's not absolutely true, but there are other places. And so one of the things you'll also note in these, and I think it's on that last page where it says, in accordance with step thirteen B, in the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's compliance supplement for Massachusetts School District, agreed upon procedures engagements, the town did not charge a restricted indirect cost rate to grants. So indirect cost rates, that's, you know, this is specific to grants. But, but for, you know, municipal school districts, depending on, you know, their size, they, often the town carries the expense. And so they'll, they'll have ways of, of essentially articulating those costs that the town incurs for certain services like human resources or that kind of thing. They don't always end up in that specific line in the interview report. But nonetheless, they try to get a sense of, you know, the, the expenses that are happening, you know, essentially on behalf of the schools at town hall. So there's, there's mechanisms for that. But that's why I say on, on the, you know, when you look at like the per pupil stuff at the state website, and they use the end of year report to really drive that, you know, it's better when you're a little, you know, one of the layers a little higher up. When you go to the single line, you really want to be sort of doing apples, apples. So regional schools to regional schools or, or similar sized districts. And so you have to just be conscientious of that as you look at that data. But if you look at broader categories like administration, you get a good sense of, of where and how much, you know, districts are spending in those, in those categories. But there's still some variability of, of practice amongst, amongst, you know, business officials as they interpret how to, you know, articulate their spending. Because not all the cuts perfectly clear, you know. Cause not only it cuts perfectly clear, you know? You know, the bigger the district, the more job titles and responsibilities are much more siloed and not in their operation, but in their, you know, sort of definition. And when, you know, the smaller you get, the more people do multiple things. And so how do you split their, their salary across some different areas comes up sometimes.
Any more questions?
You said, um, transportation, we, there's no reimbursement for, is that, does that include any out of district placement for special education?
So special education is different. So, so, yeah, there, there are some of those costs that, that can become eligible, um, but you've got to get to the sort of circuit breaker level. And, and so, um, you know, the application for circuit breaker reimbursement is separate.
Yeah.
From the end of your report. But, you know, I do think they kind of cross check, make sure that you're not, you know.
Double, double dipping?
Yeah, they definitely don't want you to double dip and they definitely, you know, you, you know, if, if you're using, say, federal grant money to pay for it, you can't count it as an expense and get state money either. You can't do that for sure. They definitely want to know you're not doing that. And that's one of the things the auditors should find if you did that by mistake. I mean, sometimes it can happen accidentally where you're like, oh, wait, I counted that.
Yeah.
I used, you know, IDEA money to pay for some of that. Oh, I can't report that as an expense that we incurred, um, in the same way. So we want to be conscientious of that when we, when we tally our, our numbers up, for sure.
Well, hats off to the business office for such clean financial management. That's great.
Just, um, with some more? Just when you give Jen, Jennifer the end of your report, I'd like one too. Yeah, thanks.
Right, are there warrants, Jennifer?
Yes, there are several. I'm going to be efficient by saying all of these, I'm going to pre, all of these are prefaced with, I Jennifer shall authorize by my signature. I'm not going to say that multiple times. Four hundred ninety, uh, payroll in the amount of four hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-six cents dated May first, twenty-four. Fort River Student Activities Transfer Request in the amount of one thousand eight hundred fifteen dollars and forty-seven cents for the transfer dated May twenty-fourth, twenty-four. Payroll in the amount of eight hundred and three, eight hundred and three thousand, one hundred, one hundred seventy-one dollars and thirteen cents dated May twenty-ninth, twenty-four. Payables in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty, eighty-eight cents for the warrant dated May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred nine dollars, three, one hundred nine thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars, revolving fund expenses of nineteen thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, grant fund expenses of twenty thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars and forty-two cents, and capital fund expenses of five hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. Fort River Student Activities Transfer Request in the amount of two thousand nine hundred eleven dollars and twenty-seven cents for the transfer dated June seventh. Three more. Fort River Student Activities Transfer Request in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars for the transfer dated June seventh. Payroll in the amount of eight hundred thirty-nine dollars, three, eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety cents dated June twelfth. And last one. Payables in the amount of one hundred ninety-three dollars, one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and nine cents for the warrant dated June tenth, twenty twenty-four. This includes general fund expenses of one hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred four dollars and eighty-two cents, revolving fund expenses of twenty thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and ninety cents, grant fund expenses of forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, and capital fund expenses of three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And that's the last one.
Thank you. So does, um, at our next regular meeting, I don't know, it'll be August or September, will Jennifer be reporting two, three months' worth of warrants?
Probably.
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
The other option, so, so I will share this with you. So, um, the fact that we have one person sign and then it's reported at the next meeting is a change, uh, what they call the Municipal Modernization Act, which allowed for, um, an individual to sign the warrant as long as they reported to the full committee. You're not compelled to do it that way. So if you want it, we could send it to all five of you and as soon as the majority have signed it, then the warrant, uh, would be valid and you would not have to do the reporting. However, until a majority of you sign it, the checks sit until you've signed it. So it, in the summer, that had proven to be really problematic for a lot of communities, which is part of why the Municipal Modernization Act gave us the flexibility to have a single person sign. But yeah, it's likely when we, we, you have your next, uh, meeting, uh, yeah, there'll be, you know, we pay everybody every two weeks, so there'll be several of those.
First of all, who is the backup for Jennifer if she's that, okay? And second of all?
I've never done it, so.
It's really easy.
You talked to Jennifer, but do, do they need to be read aloud? Can she submit? Okay.
Yeah, I, we, we've checked on this, there, the law is very particular. It's actually supposed to be the neck, the next meeting. And it is, is to be read. We've crafted it with the formality of I so-and-so by virtue of, you know, that's a fairly formal way to do it. I mean, I think the intention of this is, um, that you're demonstrating to the public, but also to the other members of, of the board, you know, that the, the review of, of spending occurred, uh, before the warrant was signed. You know, there's not a dollar that gets spent that you guys don't sign for.
All right. Well, so you be sure to talk to Jennifer or vice versa, make sure your vacations, yeah. All right, thank you. Oh, but that reminded me, so starting July first, warrant a new budget, which I believe, uh, council will vote on this coming Monday? Is that right? I think they vote on the town budget.
Yes.
The regional budget, the capital budget is coming Monday, so. Fingers crossed. All right, accept gifts, there's some gifts.
I can.
Yeah.
I move that we accept the following gifts from Martha Olver, number nine nine six seven eight one, to support Crocker Farm Principal Discretion, ten dollars. From various donors, Comenante Summer Camp donations given with registrations, five hundred ninety dollars. From Joan and Robert McDonald, number five nine four four, to support Wildwood Susan Veigard Memorial Camp Scholarship Fund, three hundred dollars. From Yu Feng and Xu Chenxiao, number two seven four seven, to support Fort River Principal Discretionary Fund, twenty dollars for a cash total of nine hundred and twenty dollars. So a second.
Second.
I have a question. So, uh, the donations, uh, given with Comenante Summer Camp, is this what you were referring to earlier?
Yes.
So they're donations, you said there was like tuition or you're charging, but these are characterized as gifts.
So these would be additional, so, so let's say.
These are not the charges for the program.
Right, this would be an addition, so someone might have capacity to, to fund another kid.
Okay.
That's a donation.
I see. Okay, thank you.
That's a habit we have, like on field trips and whatnot, so then you can just, you know, send doubles so other people can go if they don't have it.
Right. Okay. So, ready to vote? All in favor? Unanimous? Five zero, thank you. All right, agenda planning, well, um, so this is our last regular committee meeting, the academic year. We do have a meet jointly with the region in Pelham next Tuesday, briefly. So I don't yet, we don't yet have the schedule, the meeting schedule. I assume we're going, at least I haven't seen it, you're looking at me like maybe it exists.
Not yet. I was looking at that, um, recently, when, when we last met to, to set the agenda for this and, and, and I will be on Thursdays sitting with regional chair. You know, try to map out the, the, the plan for the, for the year and taking into account the various holidays and whatnot.
Right, do, is, does the committee generally meet if there is generally in August?
Yes, you know, so oftentimes what, um, that's, you know, usually August is when the retreat happens and then, you know, so there's usually not a meeting in July and then there'll be a, you know, sort of retreat in August, which I will share with you. Ms. Westmoreland reached out to me via the modern technology. Retreats are required to be posted as open meetings, which is true. You know, usually nobody shows because, you know, you have a free ranging conversation and, but it's public if somebody wants to. And she does have some documents from past retreats, so she might be a good resource for, for some of those, um, those things. But yeah, oftentimes a, a retreat would be in the kind of mid to late August, depending on, you know, sort of schedule availability. And then, you know, the sort of regular meeting schedule starts in September, um, from there.
So not a regular committee meeting in August?
It's up to you, Sarah, you're the chair.
Well, all right.
You can, it's, you know, your call. So it depends on nature of the business. It might depend on how your retreat goes. It's like, oh, well, let's have a meeting, talk about this thing that came up that we want to really figure out before we get into September and, you know, that kind of thing. It's kind of your call.
I'll connect with Dr. Herman when, in a couple of weeks, I guess. Well, does anybody, so for our next meeting, whenever it is, does anybody have any suggestions or requests? Can certainly email me. All right, there's nothing else, Jennifer?
I actually wanted to say one more thing that I meant to say in my school committee update, which is, this is the last regularly scheduled Amber School Committee meeting with Doug as our interim superintendent. So I just wanted to say thank you for, to Doug for being willing to step up into this role first as acting and then interim superintendent. I'm really thankful that you were willing to do that. And I, I'm also grateful for the future role that you'll play in, um, supporting our new superintendent and having you as that, um, bridge between the past, the present and the future is going to really benefit our district, so thank you.
You're welcome. It's been my, my honor and privilege to, to serve in that role. So, um, glad I was able to help out in, in whatever way and hopefully I'll continue to do that with the new superintendent. And I can say I've had a couple of conversations. It's been a, a real joy and pleasure to get to, to, to know, uh, Dr. Herman a little bit. I'm looking forward to our, our opportunity to work together in the coming year.
I echo those sentiments. Just a reminder, a reminder that superintendent evaluations are due today. If Irv can make, poor Irv is having technical difficulties, maybe someone can advise him. All right, with, uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you for adjourned. Thank you, Amherst Media.